We are being streamed live on Facebook and the meeting is also being recorded. I will take the start of the meeting agenda as read. What I haven't mentioned is today's date, which is the 18th of February 2021. Okay, so first of all, members, can I all ask that you make sure that any phones that you have with you are on mute or at least silent? We do have members of the public who have asked to join the meeting today. So I need to let them know that if they don't wish to be shown on camera or on the recording of this meeting, then they need to keep their cameras off. And that if they could keep themselves muted until they're asked to to join and comment on the meeting at the appropriate point. And we have a number of items before us. So if I can please just take us through the start of the agenda. As I mentioned, we'll take everything else as read. So first of all, Yola, if I can ask you for apologies for absence, please.
There were none.
Thank you. We don't have any part two items. So any members have declarations of interest, please, on any of the items that we'll be discussing this evening? No, I don't see any hands raised. I don't believe that that we have any dispensations, Yola? Nope. Okay, members, can I ask you to make any comments if you or any changes that you would like to be made to the minutes of the previous meeting on the 28th of January? Are you happy for me to sign the minutes as they are as a true record, please? Okay, I'm seeing lots of hands, so that's absolutely fine. Yep, thank you. We'll go on to correspondence, please, Yola, if that's okay, thank you.
Yeah, okay, so applications granted in support of this council's recommendation. Oakwood Court, 79 Park Villas, citing of four pots to use as classrooms, hair salon and dog grooming facility for educational purposes. 22 Emson's Hill, extensions to existing garage to provide trailer and garden storage, front porch extension and rear kitchen extension. Oak Haven Prairie Road, change of use from store to holiday let, use class C3. Lammers Park House, three prairie roads, certificate of lawfulness, the existing use of land as a garden. Applications refused also in support of this council's recommendation. Tree Lawn, One Stockton Avenue, single story, front and side extensions. And finally, applications granted before the recommendation could be submitted. On the agenda tonight is 105 X to Road, which was a proposed single story extension. So that one has been granted, but literally it got sent to us after the agenda went out. So it's one of those crossover situations where it's at the beginning of the three week cycle.
Okay, so that's one that we have got quite a long agenda tonight, members. So that's one, one that we've already ticked off. So that's a good start from that point of view. Okay. So we do also have an item on the agenda regarding terms of reference. So I'm going to move that after we've, we've looked at the items. I'm also conscious of the fact we do have member of the public who would like to to talk on the item. So if I can have your members agreement to suspend standing orders and we will invite the member to to speak on on the item in question. Okay, I see a show of hands so that you're happy to to do so. Thank you. Okay, thank you. Mrs. Stratton, Stratton, I think that's the right pronunciation, I apologize.
That's fine, Stracken, yeah, that's.
Thank you. I wanted to to bring you in. I understand you would like to to make, to speak it to us about the item 210084 Bad Lake Hill, the four dwellings. So if you would, if you, you've been, it's been explained to you how long you can speak for. And I know our officer will monitor that. But if you would like to to say anything to any of the committee, committee members before we debate that item, we'd be very happy to hear your points.
Thank you very much. First of all, can I thank the town council for allowing me to plan a meeting this evening regarding the proposed building of four detached houses in the gardens of 23 Bad Lake Hill? We are objecting to the construction of these houses on a number of grounds. Our concerns are as follows. It is my understanding that previous planning permission had been granted at 23 Bad Lake Hill for two properties. Since that planning permission was granted, three large detached dwellings have been built opposite our home, where there was once one large cottage set in its own grounds. And now a plan is being proposed for an additional four houses in an already built up area. These new dwellings on Bad Lake Hill that have already been built have already brought with them increased traffic, six additional cars or possibly more to what is already an extremely busy road, which has poor access and serves the many houses which are situated above Bad Lake Hill. The four houses could potentially bring another eight vehicles or more to the area. The bottom of Bad Lake Hill is extremely narrow. And during the 18 years we have lived in our home, we have witnessed many near misses between vehicles and even instances of road rage. During peak travel times during the holiday season, which road at the bottom of Bad Lake Hill and the junction by the Swan Public House becomes gridlock with cars. And there's growing danger for pedestrians, particularly children walking to and from school or town as there's very little footpath for protection. Parking on the hill is also an issue. I see that there are photographs on the Teambridge website. These photographs do not give a true picture of the parking situation on the hill. They've been taken on an unusually quiet day. Usually, corner of Bad Lake Hill with a junction and road to Lower Meadow Rise is full of parked cars, including large vans. This junction is opposite the entrance to the proposed site and therefore entering and exiting the site, especially by large lorries, will be problematic due to poor access. In the past 18 years, we have seen the area in which we live change from a semi rural area to one which is becoming more and more built up. In fact, at least six new houses have been built around us in the time we have been here. We have seen a beautiful old cottage replaced with large modern houses. Trees and natural habitat have been removed to the detriment of wildlife. We've seen a marked decline in the number of birds in our garden and we no longer hear owls or see bats as we used to. Whilst they appreciate we have no right to a view, the outlook from our property has now gone from being able to see the church and rolling green hills to grey roofs. Over the past two and a half years, the residents of Bad Lake Hill have already had to endure the construction of three large houses and other building works prior to that. During the building of these houses, being very little, in fact, no consideration for those of us who live here. Parking across drives, deliveries by very large lorries, cement lorries and earth removal lorries, sometimes three times a day, having to reverse and maneuver dangerously, lock in the narrow road and causing issues for people trying to go about their daily life. We have witnessed a large lorry actually get stuck reversing into the entrance to the proposed new site. During the present building work, there were times when he had many as eight to 10 builders vans parked around our homes on Bad Lake Hill, Lower Meadow Rise and in Bad Lake Close. I see from the site management document for the new site that there is no provision for constructing, construction workers to park on site. So where will they park outside our houses? The builder has placed cones at the roadside outside our houses to stop residents parking so they could not park their vehicles there the next day, so they could park their vehicles there the next day or to receive last large deliveries. We have had to put up with rivers of mud running down the hill when it rains and mud being trapes up and down the paths outside our houses by the builders and little attempt to clean the paths were made by the builders even when asked. Due to inadequate storage for building materials on this site, we have had to for the past two and a half years, look at building materials and the associated mess that comes with it. And the last house is still not finished. We are concerned that there is an area behind the three new houses that has been built apparently for access, although we fear it is to build another large property, which will be used as an area to store materials and other debris whilst the new site is under construction. So we continue have to endure the situation in sight for even longer. During what could be another prolonged period of construction, we will also have to endure large lorries and countless delivery, which I'm sure will use Bad Lake Close and Lower Meadow Rise as turning points, yet a third summer of construction and the associated problems it brings. During the buildings of the three houses, we have witnessed concerning health and safety practices, the cutting of hard material such as paving slabs without water suppression, which has caused clouds of dust and pollution, construction noise on Saturdays after 1pm and on bank holidays. These are just a few examples of what we have had to put up with over the past two and a half years. There are many more. We have evidence of this. We are concerned these kind of things that we repeated should permission be granted for four more houses. Why we will not have a view of the construction site, we will be able to hear and see the associated noise and pollution and be impacted upon in the long term by increased traffic and parking issues. Whilst I appreciate individual personal circumstances and emotions are not considered in this case in such cases as these, I would just like you to know that my husband became seriously ill when the building work of the three news was at its height. He ended up in ICU with respiratory failure and suffers with ongoing health problems as a result, including severe asthma. The pollution caused by the ongoing construction has not only impacted on his physical health, but also on his medical health, day after day of noise, pollution and inconsideration. Further construction work for a prolonged period of time will impact upon this further unless due consideration is taken by the builders while construction is underway. To conclude, we opposed the construction of four detached houses in 23 Bad Lake Hill, the reasons stated. However, if permission is granted, we would hope that many of the issues we are concerned about are listened to by the planning department and dealt with accordingly. Consideration of people living around the building site, deliveries managed so that the safety of residents and the road infrastructure are not affected in any way. There is already evidence of road erosion on Bad Lake Hill as a result of previous building work. A reduction of the amount of constructed workers' vehicles, cones not being used to stop us from parking near our homes. Pollution and noise is kept to a minimum. Construction materials and builders debris are hidden from view by adequate screening. I would propose that two, not four dwellings being built would be far less detrimental to the area and inconvenience to those living in the area to a far lesser extent. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Stratton, that's. Thank you very much for your, for your opinions and your input to the meeting today. Can I ask you to mute yourself, please? Thank you. As I understand it, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, Yola, can the members of the public stay in the meeting while we are debating the item? Or is this, or would they normally be put back into the waiting room? I can't recall.
They, they are welcome to stay very much in the same way as being.
That's fine.
Obviously, they can leave after the item, they don't have to sit through the whole meeting.
No, that's absolutely fine. And just to let you know, Zoe, I'm sorry, Mrs. None, I think it is, isn't it, Mr. and Mrs. None? You are, we are streaming this meeting live on Facebook. So you, you did have the option to turn off your camera if you wanted to. I just wanted to let you know that, that fact and that the meeting is being recorded. But as you joined us a little bit later, you didn't hear that fact. So I just wanted to make sure you were aware of that. Right, members, we will now go back into standing orders so that we can debate the item. Can I just have confirmation you're happy to to do that? Thank you. So we will now look at our first item, as you know from the agenda, members, is 21 Trebelo 84, 23 Bad Lake Hill. Yola, could I ask you to, you're already doing it, thank you very much. Let's have a look at this proposal. Hopefully, members have had a read, there's an awful lot of documents concerning this item on, on the website. Okay. So these four properties are at the bottom of the, of that site. There, I think just you can tell from that previous slide that just near the properties that are actually on what I always think of as which road, but they're not quite on which road yet. Can I ask members to raise their electronic hands if they've got any comments they want to, to make on this? And I will bring you in to to start the debate. Okay, this is the current, I think these are the most up to date photographs of the, of the site. And this is a view of the actual, of actual Bad Lake Hill and the entrance to the site. Right, thank you very much. I think we might want to come back and have a look at some of those again, Yola. But for now, if we can go back to members, thank you. And I can see that Carol Tamlin was first with a electronic hand raised. So please go ahead, councillor Tamlin.
I actually live, live near the site, I live in Which Road. And I can sympathize and understand what Mrs. Stratton has said in her report.
Yes.
The traffic, traffic even without the new buildings is chaotic. You've got traffic going down and then you've got traffic coming up. It's very narrow by the swan and they've got traffic coming down from Bad Lake Hill as well. And that way, and, and it's, it's sort of buffalo neck a lot of the time, really. I think the site is perhaps overdeveloped as well. So yes, I'd like to sort of make those points.
Okay, thank you councillor Tamlin. Can you take down your electronic hand if you, thank you, okay. Councillor Morehead, you're next, please go ahead.
Brought me unawares there, Chair, I didn't know.
I think councillor Tamlin, councillor Tamlin took me unawares as well, so thank you. Carry on councillor Morehead.
I, I did study this yesterday. And I must say, I was taken aback to see another application so soon after the last one, especially in the, in the place where it's proposed, because it is more or less opposite the junction with Meadow Rise. Yeah, it's in a very, very difficult area. I would quite like at some stage to see the very first picture that we saw, because you can see from that, that between the newly built ones and another four, it's almost overpowering the, the existing cottages. It will almost be doubling the, the number of units there. And quite changing the, the character, which has been older tradition. Now, I know that's not a, a planning matter, so we can't complain on that point. But I do think it's certainly overdevelopment of the site. It's going to put far too much pressure on a very congested and difficult series of road junctions. And I would have thought that the first application for two houses, even though that will cause extra problems, was more appropriate than four. I think it is overdevelopment of the site in a, an already very constrained part of the road system. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that a proposal councillor Morehead that you, or is that just a comment at this stage? Sorry, you're muted councillor Morehead, sorry.
Being very good and muting myself instantly. No, it wasn't.
That's fine, no, that's fine.
I might like to come back to it.
No, that's absolutely fine, thank you. Councillor Foden, I think you're next. Please go ahead.
Thank you. Okay, so I went up to see the site on Tuesday. The first thing I noticed was that it's a very tight turning into the entrance to the site from Bad Lake Hill. It is directly opposite the junction of Lower Meadow Rise. When I turned around, I could see that the access out of the site road is very poor visibility. So for vehicles turning out of there, it's, there's not enough visibility to see what traffic is coming up from Bad Lake Hill. And also then you're concentrating on what's coming out of Lower Meadow Rise. And you would then possibly miss something coming down the hill from Bad Lake Hill. So that's very poor visibility on that junction. I'm concerned about the level of pollution that this development would cause in this small site if four houses were built in there, tucked away in there. And since December last year, December 2020, I know that trees have been chopped down in the site, lots of trees, including a huge majestic tree, I think possibly a eucalyptus tree, although I'm not, no tree expert, a magnolia tree and another deciduous tree, they have been chopped down. When I looked around at the site, I could see a big pile of logs and some evergreen trees around the hedges. Looking at the site plan, the houses planned are far too close to the backs of the existing houses on Bad Lake Hill and far too close to the backs of the houses on Which Road. And my concern grows as well because there's listed cottages at the foot of Bad Lake Hill. I know there's at least three listed properties down there. Listed cottages with that roots. And I'm very concerned that the proposed development of these four detached houses could destabilize the land that it's being built on, but also because it's far so close to the existing properties. I'm concerned that the proposed development is pushing on the green margins of Dawlish Bad Lake Hill is, as I knew it before those three new houses were built. It was, it was, it was a nice attractive area and it still is an attractive area. And the trees that were there, I recognize when I walk down there, often seeing lots of flocks of birds around. And I'm worried about the loss of biodiversity, the loss of wildlife that would happen if we allowed this construction to go ahead. And I would like to propose that we object and we recommend refusal.
Okay, thank you for that councillor Foden. I've got someone else who'd like to speak and obviously then we will, we will carry on with the, the debate anyway. Councillor Heath, if you'd like to go ahead, please.
Thank you, Chair. Just picking up before I make any comments on the objection. Very sad to hear that builders around there have been creating such an environmental mess with all the dust and bits and pieces. And just if they're still listening, they should be getting on to Teambridge and environmental officers to, and even planning, because that really shouldn't be happening anyway. So that hasn't got a bearing on this. Now, I didn't understand, because it wasn't said whether, whether they're the same builders or not. Because obviously, if, if they're different builders, that's not really the case. I don't know whether, just for a moment before I say anything else, Chair, do you know whether it's the same builders?
I believe it is, I believe, I believe it is, yes councillor Heath.
Okay, well, obviously that is worrying, but as I say, that is a thing that needs to be picked up. Just as an interest for those who don't know, on our eco meeting this week, we was introduced, I can't remember his surname, but Scott, who's our new environmental stroke wildlife warden. So we're very, very lucky, it's a voluntary thing, along with David Hutton, the Dawlish Against Plastics. And they impressed on me at the meeting. And so I think I've got to put this extra hat on now, that, you know, when we look at all plans, even if it's not actually allowing planning, national planning policies, we can still object because we've got to become more wildlife friendly in reality when it comes to building. If we're going to change things and we all talk about it, but really not a lot is changing. And they urged me and the committee to think about, make sure that there are bird boxes, make sure the trees are going in, make sure we, we are having hedgehog holes, et cetera, et cetera. And I'm afraid to say, and I'm very sad to say this, for all these years of many campaigns, it still isn't happening. And so you, you may find me changing even more in the future by keeping raising objections. So having said that, I have looked for a biodiversity letter. I can't see one on the website over it, I may have missed it. I don't know whether they've got another one somewhere. So first of all, there's, there's an absence of what they're going to do on this land to really help not destroy it anymore and the wildlife, that is missing. So that would be one objection in my, my opinion. Tree management is sort of there, I'm not quite sure if there's enough of them. I, I pick up with what I may have said on the listed buildings. When they build buildings near a listed building, it does have to be a little bit in keeping with it. Otherwise, it does throw the whole road out. So that is a, is quite a good point if our finance officer is making a note of these, I think. I think they will actually form part of a problem. And I would also back the idea that it does seem to be an overdevelopment. And I think probably it would be hard to resist two homes on there. But four is what we're looking at and four it's a no. So I can't remember if that was a proposal, do we have a proposal?
We have a proposal from councillor Foden, councillor Foden.
Councillor, but I'd like to second it, thank you very much.
Thank you councillor Heath. We have another few councillors who would like to come into the debate. Councillor Taylor, you're next, please.
Thank you, Chair. I'm not sure that this is the same builders as currently still working at number 25 Bad Lake Hill, which was the site of the Arts and Crafts Cottage, which has since been demolished. And there are now three houses there.
Yes, it is.
This, this application is, is from, thank you, this application is from Henon Homes with an address in Dawlish and the agent is Gary Diamond. So.
Okay.
I hadn't, but I haven't looked up the, the other, the other application. Obviously, they're, they are on different sites. 25 Bad Lake Hill and 23 Bad Lake Hill. So this is, this is a large site to, with a house to the rear of the, of the street. What, what strikes me is just how convoluted the entrance is to these four homes. It's not conducive to, to, to taking large vehicles down or trailers or anything like that. So, so the point that the, that is being made by, by members of the public and perhaps other members here too, about parking on the road is, is, is certainly, certainly a very valid one. And yes, I can see there being, being some great, some great issues with, with regard to accessing the site for, for, for building first of all. So there would, there would need to be a very tightly drawn construction management plan should this application be approved. But, but I don't, I don't think the, the site has been designed very well for, for houses. Certainly, it, it is a very large site and there is scope for development there, which I think can be done much more sympathetically than, than, than this scheme. Councillor Foden made the point about there being listed buildings nearby. And, and it could, you, you, you know, you, it may be that planning officers will take the view that this is in the setting, this site forms the setting of those listed buildings to a degree. So, so from, from my, from my point of view, I, 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 I think it's poorly laid out. And the, and four houses, I mean, they're, they're, they're okay. They're, they're typical market houses, they're, they're probably not Dawlish vernacular, they're, they're rather off the pages of a, of a big housing company's catalogue. But putting, putting all of that aside, I think the, the impact that this will have on local residents is going to be quite significant. And from, from that point of view, I think it, it ticks the box for overdevelopment in, in my book and poor design.
Okay, thank you councillor Taylor. I'll move on to another councillor who'd like to have a say on this item, councillor Wiggie, please.
Well, most of what I wanted to say has already been said. I was hoping to be able to second the councillor Foden's proposal. It is very clearly overdevelopment, they're squeezing far too many houses into this. The two homes I can just about see, but for. Um, the two homes I can just about see, but four, no, it's too much. Um, so I, I fully agree there. I'd like to, uh, perhaps propose an amendment to councillor Foden's, um, uh, proposal in that we also request that should the officer be, uh, inclined to approve this, that it go to full committee at Teambridge.
Okay, thank you councillor Wrigley. Are you happy to accept that, um, that amendment councillor Foden to your proposal?
Definitely, yes.
And councillor Heath, you second that, thank you. You've indicated that's fine, lovely, okay. Um, we'll move on now to other councillors who would like to, to make a comment. I'm going to come to you first councillor Lather, as councillor Morehead has already spoken. So councillor Lather, if you'd like to go ahead first, please.
Thank you, madam chairman. Um, or, or really all I'm supposed to say is the fact that I listen very carefully. And I agree with everything and all the comments that have been made. I, I didn't want to appear to be just sitting here, kind of not involved. And I have been involved, I've listened carefully and I agree.
Thank you very much for your input. Councill, councillor Morehead, if you'd like to, to go ahead, please.
Thank you, madam chair. If I could just add something which, um, I hadn't thought of before. Well, I have, but I'm not at the time. Um, it's not only the traffic that's a problem in that stretch of the road. There isn't pavement on one side, in fact, there's a little gully because there is, um, a spring further up the hill. On the other side, where all the, the old cottages are, it's just cobbled and it's very, very narrow. So if there's anyone walking up there, and it is a place where people do go for a walk up to go to the Ampti in places, they've got no escape route if there are vehicles coming up, down, stuck in the middle. You've got extra pollution every time there is a jam in that part of the road. But the other thing is with four houses, as it was mentioned by the member of public, you're likely to get at least eight vehicles. And I'm not up to date with all the figures now, it used to be years ago with Dare, but I'm guessing that each of those vehicles would be, um, likely to do at least three journeys a day. I know they go out, come back, but on average, so we're talking about twenty, between twenty and thirty journeys a day from those extra four houses on an already very dangerous congested road with no room for pedestrians either. So I'm definitely not in favour of it and agree very much with the proposal which is on the table.
Okay, thank you. Okay, well, we have a proposal and someone has seconded the item. Um, councillor, oh councillor Martin Wrigley wants to come back.
I'm terribly sorry Chair, I was just investigating my, um, favourite item, which is that of drainage. And I note that there is no proposal for the, um, surface water drainage in the current plans. And our drainage engineers have helpfully said they've got to do something. So I think I would, I would like to add the, uh, the problems of, of lack of specified drainage uh, into the objection, if, 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 if I may.
Councillor Foden and councillor Heath, are you happy to accept that, um, item as, as the reason? I'm getting nods from, getting nods and, and, and yeah, that's great, thank you, thank you, um.
I think I just thought if we could have the proposal read out again, or we, as we've done a few amendments before we go.
Absolutely, absolutely, don't worry councillor Heath, we absolutely will do. Um, and I, I must have been, I, I agree with a lot of the concerns, with all of the concerns that have been raised tonight. And I think I did read all of the items, that there's an awful lot of documents concerned with this application. Um, and the, I was very disappointed to note that there was no problem with the road as far as Devon County Council concerned as well. Even though the, the points that we've just made, so I think that definitely needs to, to be made a, an item of concern. Okay, well, we have a proposal, um, and a second, uh, in front of us, ladies and gentlemen. So, um, if we could go to the vote, please. If you could read out the proposal, Yola, please.
Okay, this, this will be a collection of comments as opposed to a very well put together proposal because it all came in different order. So please tell me if there's anything missing or things that you want added. Uh, so compiled from everything, obviously overdevelopment was a big one. Um, too much pressure on the existing road layout, already constrained, um, junction, um, issue with the pavement, um, and safety concerns, pollution, more cars, more traffic. Um, we've got absence of biodiversity report, impact on listed buildings. Um, again with overdevelopment, four is too many, two is possibly okay. Um, also with the road safety, there was the poor visibility was mentioned. Um, the actual development is poorly laid out. Um, significant impact on local residents and, uh, lack of specified drainage.
So a drainage engineering plan, a construction management plan, I think as well was the wording. Councill, councillor Taylor, you have your hand raised.
Thank you, I think it's, uh, yes, and I think councillor Wrigley also asked that the matter go to, uh, go to committee should the officer be minded to approve.
Yeah, it's a long list, it's a long list. I think we've got everything. Is everyone happy with, with the, the wording of that? Councillor Heath.
Yeah, just one thing with the, um, uh, biodiversity, if, um, report, I think Yola said, perhaps we should also add in the word comma with provisions because it's provisions that's missing as such, because having a report might just be rubbish, but we want the provisions for the, uh, for the wildlife as we've discussed. Um, and even, even if they don't have bats flying through, there are many groups now saying we should still put them up because other birds use them anyway or other bird boxes. And, and builders have got to stop just building bricks and mortar and they've got to think of our wildlife because we're in danger throughout the world.
Okay, thank you councillor Heath. Councillor Foden, please go ahead.
Thank you, sorry, I, I don't know whether you mentioned it, Yola, um, the level of pollution.
Oh, yes.
My pollution, thank you.
Good point.
Okay, I think we've, we think we're all happy with, uh, with that long list of items for Yola to, to put together into quite, at least more than one sentence. Um, but we all trusted to do exactly that, so thank you, all agreed on that. So if we could take a vote on that proposal as, as has just been discussed, please. For, a recommendation for refusal, just to clarify.
That's all.
So that's unanimous, thank you. Okay, I noticed Mr and Mrs None have left the meeting. Um, Mrs Stratton, if you're, if you wish to, to leave, you're more than welcome to do so as we move on to other items on the agenda, but thank you for your contribution.
Thank you very much for inviting me, thank you.
Right, okay, well, let's, we, second item on the agenda was Exeter Road. As you meant, as Yola's always mentioned, this has already been, um, accounted for, uh, Teambridge because of the dates. We, so we now, um, move on to 33 Lower Drive. So if we can have a look at that one, please, Yola. This is a single storey side extension with decking and balcony to front. Okay.
Um, Chair, if I may.
Yeah, please.
Just to highlight to other members in case they didn't spot it, obviously on the agenda, we have the original title. This is the first of two of the applications this evening where, um, it, they were given permission to add a bit more to the title. So you'll see that it's specifically talking about the grey PVC cladding. So just in case members hadn't spotted it, there it is.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay. Yeah, this has been before, this is a revised plan. All right, so, um, let's come back to members. Did anyone have any, um, points to raise on this item at all? Councillor Morehead, please go ahead.
The first thing, thank you, madam chair, that I wanted to ask was, what date was this submitted? Because I'm of the feeling that these recent applications are being hurried through the process and we get to see them before there are, often before there are contributions from conservation offices or environmental departments and so forth. And I feel that we are then not in a, it's not particularly with this one, but I feel that we are not particularly in the right place at the right time to consider them sometimes. Um, we make a decision based on what's before us and we haven't got the, we haven't got the advice from the professionals.
I think we, I think you're, I think there are to a certain extent, I've noticed that myself, it's about the timings of when reports come in. We, you're, you're right, we are at the liberty of when the items and the, um, information is uploaded and put on the website. Um, and we, we can, we can go on what we go on. Um, we are here to give our, um, the, the local residents their opinion and, and share that. And that opinion then goes forward to the next level of, of local government, the district council. So I think it's a, it's a fair point that we can at least have our input and represent our constituents is how I see it. Um, and it might not be from an export, expert level, but at, at least it is a, a, a good opinion and, and reflects our, um, members of the public, but I'll take your point. Okay, was, does anyone else want to, to mention this item at all? Any other points of, of view to be made on this item? No? For my two pennies worth, oh, beg your pardon, I was just going to have my two pennies worth, but I will allow you councillor Morehead, you go ahead.
Sorry, on this particular item, um, I, I have read it through yesterday and, um, there's quite a lot of input from, um, planning officer and it's, it's rather awkward because the argument is made that this rather, well, to my mind unpleasant grey cladding is being used across the road and so forth. Um, I, I just feel that, um, personally, I would be guided by the planning officer, who knows, who is more familiar with it than I am. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, I mean, it, it, there is a point as, as you mentioned councillor Morehead, that, um, that it, it should be, it, it should be approved from the point of view, it's another property nearby that has a similar kind of cladded, cladding. Um, I think that's the point that's made. Um, I, I don't see an objection to this, um, item. I haven't seen any local, um, people, um, make any comments on this, on the, uh, on the website. It doesn't seem to be a, a feel that this is not the done thing in that area, there are other, um, extensions, et cetera. So I, I'm, I don't have an objection to this point. I'm not sure I, you know, I have anything else more to say really, from that point of view. Councillor Taylor, I see you do have something to say, please go ahead.
Thank you Chair, uh, yes, good, good to see some, uh, hand drawn plans coming forward, uh, in this digital age. Um, yes, it's, um, it, it's probably best to, to, to download files like this on, uh, onto a, onto a PDF so that you can, uh, look at them in, in close, in closer detail. It's an interesting house actually, it's, uh, it's sort of like two and a half stories at the front because of the, uh, the land sloping away at the front. So I can understand, the, the balcony is really just, um, it, it, it's not for, for partying, it's, it's more really to, 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 to have a, an, you know, an, an interesting entrance porch or somewhere to stand while you, while you knock at the front door. Um, in terms of the cladding, yeah, I'm, I'm not sure whether I would want, wanted on my house. Um, but it's, this isn't in a conservation area. Um, it's, you know, it's, it's, um, it's an attempt to give it a, you know, the house a new, a new look. So I, I don't have any, any, um, strong objections to it. Uh, I think it's, uh, it's, 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 it's done, the, the intention is to have a, a very nicely built uh, extension to, to, to an original house. So, so, uh, fair, fair play to the owner and, uh, now, now is the time for the officers to, 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 to do, to do their work. Our, our job is really to say whether we like it or not. I think, I think that's, that's, that's really what we're all here for. We're not ex, we're not, um, officers in, uh, in, 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 in the same way that, um, our, our not experts in the way that our officers are, uh, at Teambridge. Um, you know, it, I think it really comes down to gut, gut feel. Um, so if you don't like it, now's your time to say.
Thank you councillor Taylor. Um, councillor, councillor Martin Wrigley, please go ahead.
Whilst I think it's amazing that anybody in this day and age is actually putting any form of cladding on any form of house whatsoever, let alone plastic cladding, um, I can't, in, I can't see any valid reason for objecting to this. So I'd like to propose no objection.
Okay, thank you for that. Councillor Morehead. I think you're seconding that, I'm not sure. Thank you, thank you. Um, okay. Does any other members want to make any comments on this or item? We have got a proposal to accept it with no objections and this has been seconded, so we can go to a vote on that item. Unless anyone else would like to say anything else? No? Okay, we, we'll, we'll go to a vote on that item then, please to, um, to pass, um, this item with no objection. Okay, can you show hands, please? Thank you. Thank you, Yola. Um, we'll now move on, um, to Lower Rixdale House, 21 00128. We've actually got two items for this, um, house, as I understand it, I think it's the same item. Uh, one's listed building consent, yeah, okay.
Chair, if I may, it's not
Yeah.
Twenty, oh, it's Lower Rixdale Farm, I suppose, Lower Rixdale House.
House, that's right, yeah. I was thinking, I just realised that, yeah.
We've actually got three, we've got two for the same one, which are on the same slide now, and then there's one later on that's slightly different.
Yep.
But all the Rixdale.
Okay, but it's, it is. Yes, okay. And this is for an extension to the north elevation to form additional living accommodation, access to the garden and new porch to existing scullery entrance.
Chair, if I may, while we're looking, I, I, I
Yeah.
seem to recall that this came through not that long ago.
Yeah, I think this is a change.
Is it a change to what was approved before or is it additional to what was improved before? Do we know?
Um, I read this as because the last time this came before is this address was about the roof. Um, I can remember councillor Taylor waxing lyrical on, um, Delaboll Slate, if I recall, I think this is the property. Um, but I will be, I'm quite happy to be corrected on that, Yola, if you can, um, double, do a double check on, on that for me, that would be very useful. Um, I think this is the item with the Yeah, so we've got all of the, um, materials that are being proposed in this item and, okay. Councillor Morehead, did you want to come in while we'll have a look, having a look through this, please go ahead.
Thank you Chair, yes, I have looked at this thoroughly, I know the previous applications were all about roofs and things, I think a couple. Um, and the, the architect makes a good point that you don't have to have a pastiche of what's there already. And I like the fact that they're using, uh, oak.
Yes.
I like the fact that they've reused one of the doors, which they are taking off, I think, a pantry and using it at a, at an entrance or exit. I really don't like the style of the, it's ultra modern style of the rainwater goods. I think they are OTT, um, there's modern and there's something off another planet. It's just, that's my, just my personal feeling. Um, so apart from that comment, I don't see that I could object, they are, uh, making good use of what was a wonderful but more or less run down traditional farm complex. So as far as this particular application goes, uh, other than a comment about the style of the rainwater goods, um, I wouldn't feel that I could personally object. Thank you.
Okay, thank you councillor Morehead. Does any other members have anything to, to say? Councillor Heath, please go ahead.
It's, thank you, it's more of a question, um, which I'm not sure if that's, oh, sorry, I've got a problem with the computer at the moment. Um, yeah, sorry. Ha- have we got a, a picture or a diagram um we could put up of the actual s- not just the site, but the roads around it, just so I can quite see where it's, it's fitting in with the other houses, um, other buildings nearby. Have they shown one on this, on the website at all?
I, I think there is. You can see, well, you can see where the road is from the um, from at least one of the plans. It's on a bend of the road before it goes actually down to Dawlish Water, where the little bridge is over Dawlish Water, or passed it many times.
Let's see if we can find any very quickly.
Councillor Morehead, you put your hand up. Have you got an answer for um?
I was just saying, to the best of my knowledge, there aren't any houses very close to this um settlement. It is on a very narrow road, and as you say, it goes down through Dawlish Water. And there are other places further down, which have been developed in recent years from similar old properties. So I think there, there might in the future be a limit as to how many um units get put into here because of the pressure and difficulties with the very narrow country road, but uh, nothing nearby as far as I'm aware.
Right, and these, these are, they're calling them extensions, aren't they? They're not additional buildings. Is that, that's correct, isn't it?
No, it's one large farmhouse that's been um, I guess it's being accommodated to the twenty first, twenty, yeah, twenty first century really from that point of view, so.
Right, okay. I mean, yes, it's always, always a worry, isn't it, of creep? Before, you know, you've got a whole new lot of houses, et cetera, and it's coming through the back door, literally. It seems to be a trend these days, what happens, but yeah, as it is, it doesn't look too bad.
Okay, thank you councillor Heath. Councillor Taylor, you've raised your hand. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, yeah, I think what we're looking at here is um, is uh just additional, an additional room uh with access to the garden. Uh, that's the, that's certainly the description. I don't see this additional um like, uh, you know, it, it's not an attempt to make an additional unit, uh, far, far from it. Um, and, and what they're doing is um they're, they're not, they're not aping the original design at all. It's, it's um unapologetically um modern in terms of its, its um design, um including the rainwater goods. Um, and that sort of um uh juxtaposition, if you like, with, with the, with the old listed building um is, is something that, that planners actually, what they do, do welcome and look for rather than, you know, you know, a little bit of this and a little bit of that. So, so from, from that point of view, um, I think, you know, the, the applicant is, is doing doing the right thing to get um the uh, the, the application uh through, uh, through planning. Um, and I, I would certainly commend uh once again the, the quality of the materials that um, that, that, that we're, that we're seeing here uh for, for this build. I think it'd make a, 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 a useful addition to the house. Um, and it's clearly a, a modern extension uh for other, o- other um applications we've seen regarding this house or the, the, this rate, this range of houses here. They, they really are, um, you know, pulling all the stops out in terms of uh, of uh, you know in terms of a quality of build and, and, you know, looking to, looking towards the, the buildings looking, looking good in the future. So I'd be happy to uh, to propose no objection, if you haven't got an obje- if you haven't got a proposal on the table at the moment.
I don't believe we have. We've had people with, with not having objections, but I think your um proposal at this point stands. Um, councillor Tamlin, if you don't mind, I'll come to you. Um, and as you haven't spoken on this item first, I'll let you go ahead, please. Councillor Tamlin? You've muted, you've muted yourself, um councillor Tamlin, sorry. There you go.
The proposal made by Gary.
Okay, you'd like to second the proposal. Thank you. Um, councillor Morehead, I hope I haven't cut you off there. Were you, were you about to do the same?
No, I was just going to suggest um a slight amendment if councillor Taylor was willing, and that was simply subject to a conservation officer advice.
Councillor Taylor, you happy to accept that as an amendment to your proposal? Councillor Wrigley, I can see you have a hand raised, but I'll wait for councillor Taylor's comment on this point.
I, I don't have an objection to, to the amendment, certainly.
Okay, thank you. Councillor, councillor Wrigley?
Yeah, I was just gonna propose that we take twelve and thirteen together, which is the uh, the house application and the listed building consent application.
I think that's, I, I think I, I did say about us taking those together, but I, I'm, those are the two that you've just shown us, I think, Yola. Um, I wasn't clear on that, so thank you for um pulling me up on that, councillor Wrigley. Yeah, I think that is a good idea. This is the listed building consent, and obviously we can't, we don't need to take that as a separate point. Um, if you're happy um that that proposal does count for the, for the two of them, councillor Taylor and councillor Tamlin, we, we will go ahead and, and vote on that, if that's okay. Okay. Did you have any other points to make councillor Wrigley on that, or is, is, is that?
No, it was just that, my apologies if you'd already said that. I hadn't, I, I was, I was busy looking at some of the details on the map.
No, no, that's absolutely fine. Um, okay, we have a proposal and a second uh, a proposal from councillor Taylor, second from councillor Tamlin. So if you'd like to um indicate with you um approve of this item with the proviso that um it's subject to the conservation officers um being consulted. I think that's probably the wording, was being consulted from that point of view. Okay, please raise your hands if you're in favour of that. Thank you, that's everybody. So, we now go on to um twenty one O O one three.
Um, again, this one's one with a amended title, so you'll see it on the first screen, where they've just added a little bit more to clarify what building was.
Okay. Paella delivered pride fitness. Okay. So this is a change of use of an outbuilding to a gymna- to the gymnasium. Um, it's the gymnasium storage unit that they want to change. Um, there was a bit of confusion. I think that's why you've clarified that, Yola, thank you. Um, the gymnasium is carrying on. It is the actual storage unit that they were using as a, a hot food takeaway preparation area. Um, and I, that's where the, the clarification of the um um, of, of the, the title there is about. Hopefully members have had a chance to have a look at this one. Did anyone have any thoughts they'd like to, to share on this one at all?
Chair, I'm just slightly worried I might have to declare an interest because I'm hungry and the thought of a Paella delivery close to my house is quite uh
Okay, um, point taken. Councillor Heath, you're either hungry or you, you, you have a point on this one, thank you.
Right, I could be hungry, but not a problem.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it seems quite a sensible thing to do, especially if they're already sort of semi-using it. It needs to be made official. I guess the only thing is whether we should tag on to it. Uh, I know it seems obvious, but whether we should or not, I'll wait to see what you lot think. Um, subject to the normal hygiene checks, et cetera, to be used as food preparation, which of course that, that room wasn't before. Um, not knowing exactly how it happened in that building, but not, don't know where that cupboard is. Um, there's a few rooms, separate rooms in there, whether, whether or not um there's a sink nearby and so on. I think perhaps it might be worth just uh putting on there, on there for the planning inspectors to have a look at, or the officer.
Councillor Heath, the business Paella, um, Paella delivered has been hap- has been working for, I think, at least six months, so I think it has been inspected and has a, a licence, so I, I, I'm pretty sure they have all the equipment and it has been inspected to, to, to date. And I think because with lockdown, it sounds from the, 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 the documents submitted with this application, they've been doing very well and have been supplying hot food to an awful lot of people who've been in a, in the lockdown, so they might even deliver to you councillor Wrigley if you're still hungry, so, you know, yeah, okay. Let's um, okay, let's carry on. Councillor Morehead, you're next, please. Please go ahead.
Um, thank you, Chair. I just wondered if someone could clarify for me, clarify for me exactly where it is. I can't see an entrance and an exit, and it seems to be right against Shutterton Brook.
It's not far away from there, as I understand it. The gymnasium entrance is right next to what I always call the kind of strange garage affair, where the windows um businesses near Shutterton Brook. Um, and the storage room is next to the gymnasium, so.
M and D hire, is that complex there?
It, that, at the back of that, yeah.
Thank you very much, yeah, thank you.
Okay. Um, councillor, councillor Foden, you're, had you got something to quickly add to that, councillor Wrigley, or, or I've got some, I've got councillor Foden who wants to speak?
Gym is, is what used to be M and D.
Okay. Ah, okay, thank you. Um, councillor Foden, thank you for being patient. Go ahead.
Thank you. I think this is really exciting, and yes, my mouth is starting to water, and I'd love to hear it tonight. Um, so I think I'd like to propose that we accept this and go for it, because the sooner it's approved, the sooner I can get Paella delivered.
Okay, um, thank you for, thank you for that.
Make sure it hasn't got squid in it.
Okay, um, right, okay, so we have a proposal. Um, I'm happy to, to second that councillor Foden. I have no objection to this item. So did anyone else have any other um points they wanted to make on, on this item, or are you happy for us to, to go to the vote? I think councillor Taylor?
Thank you, Chair. Um, do we have the times for when this is going to be open? And is it, i- i- is it, so it's a takeaway? Uh, so in terms of
They deliver, they deliver the items, so they cook, I think they're open from they, they are on the, they are in the details. I'm trying to remember. I think it's something like from two till six thirty at night, they cook, and then they deliver the food. They, they do the preparation and cooking, and then they deliver during that time and into the early evening, if I remember rightly. But I'd have to actually read the, the, the documents again. That's, I read those yesterday.
So it, so it's not a retail frontage as such, where
No, no, no.
Okay.
No, they absolutely, that, it's just, it's, it's where they prepare the food, and then it's all delivered by the, by the, by the team. Okay, so we have a proposal and a second uh, the, in front of us, so um, are we happy to, to go on a vote on that basis? If, in which case, please raise your hands if you support this item. Thank you. Right, um, we're now going on to twenty one Woodland Avenue. Uh, variation of condition two on planning permission. And this is a slight change to the plans of a two-storey side and rear extension. Thank you, Yola. This is quite a substantial building that we have seen before. And as I read this, it's a slight change to the design, but I will councillor Heath, you have your, your sharp on the draw tonight. Off you go, please.
I was, wasn't I?
Yes, you were.
Yeah, just remind me, no, we had this one come to the meeting not that long ago. I don't think it was last time. I think it was only a few times ago.
It was a few, it was a couple of months ago, and I think it's, it has been passed, but
Did we accept that, 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 that stage? Can you remember? I'm wondering why they've come back again. What, is it something wrong, or they have changed their mind on design? Did we actually turn that down?
It was, it actually went, I think it was approved at Teenbridge level um on an officer's recommendation, and I think this is now coming back to us with a variation of a condition on the uh approved
Can anyone remember?
Item.
Did we turn it down ourselves? Can you remember? Or they overturned that decision?
I don't recall. I'm gonna, I'm gonna see if councillor Taylor does. He's just raised his hand, just as you said that, so hopefully he's gonna remember.
Carry on.
Councillor Taylor?
Thank you, uh, Chair. Yeah, I remember very well, yes, uh, we, we did approve, uh, we, we offered no objection to, to this scheme. In fact, I think, uh, I think it received some, some quite positive comments. Um, the, i- if you look at the, very carefully at the elevations proposed, it does actually n- n- note what the changes are. Uh, so it's raising of the floor by two hundred millimetres, so what's that, um, eight inches? And uh, a lower, a lower para- lower parapet raised. I think there's another on, on, on one other, one of the other elevations, a lowered windowsill um, on one window, a raised windowsill on another, and a new door. It, it, to, to, to me, it all looks perfectly in keeping with the original design. Um, and yeah, I s- I still like it as much as the first time I saw it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Modern, I like modern buildings, despite living in a, in an old one.
Okay, thank you councillor Taylor. Councillor Heath, you'd like to come back, please, go ahead.
Yeah, well, thanks for the answer. I thought we approved it. It wasn't a hundred percent, and obviously the council itself um approved it. There is actually, and if anyone noticed it, an objection on the website saying it's going to uh upset the view of the sea, et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah.
Uh, of course, if it's just a long distance view, there, that's not a planning reason as such, but um, it, it's quite, I don't quite know why it would, but there again, I'm not standing where they're standing. Um, because it, the ground goes steeply down there. If anyone's ever been down there, it's like a puff getting up the hill again.
Yes.
It's, it's way down. Um, I agree, modern buildings on a cliff sometimes can look very stylish, a bit like grand designs. Um, it is a bit of a grand design area down there. Um, whether one should develop on a, near cliffs, as I think I've said more than once in other meetings, and, and it all falls into sea, into thirsty, I should say. Um, that's up to them, but on, on a planning point of view, it's hard to actually say no at this stage, when we've already approved it.
Yeah, I, I must admit, I'm minded to agree exactly with, with that, especially as it is a, a variation on, of as councillor, as councillor Taylor has just said, um uh, by two hundred mil in one instance, so I think we've just lost um, one of the members of the committee, so I'm not sure what's happened there, but anyway, okay. Okay, hopefully not. Councillor Morehead, please go ahead.
Even realise, oh, sorry. Um, I, yes, I propose no objection.
Sorry, Chair, I think we might pause for a moment. We appear to have lost our clerk.
Yes, I think she's just, I was just gonna say, she's just um, maybe her internet has just gone down.
Either that or comes at break.
I don't think so. I don't think so, um, councillor.
It does happen, you know, we are human.
Um, we will, we'll pause just a moment and see if she's obviously gonna try to get back on to um the system.
It's, it is still being recorded, fortunately.
It is indeed. Okay. I think we've just got to give her, we, we can give her about fifteen minutes to try and get back, and then we we have to pause the meeting and look to uh hold it at another time, but um
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, because there's a big one tonight, which we wouldn't want to miss, going back to Teenbridge, which should be a a, a bit of a shame, you know, as uh, without mentioning any names, as our favourite ones returned.
Madam Chairman, you, you, people were talking about um somebody objecting, and I've just brought it up. And this woman is, is objecting because it's right in front of her.
Yeah.
See how it is, but she's
Yeah, I know.
Down there.
Exactly.
It's on the edge of the cliff.
Yeah, and it was, I believe the same, same member of the public, the same resident objected to the um, to this property when it, when it was before as before, actually. Um, I'm the, I don't, it's not exactly the same wording, but I think it's the same style of wording that I recognise.
Read it, it seems as if it's right, kind of in front of her. They can look in through overlook the windows and all sorts.
Yeah.
Yeah. Councillor Morehead, you've been very patient. Sorry, you, you've got your Yeah. Councillor Morehead, you've been very patient. Sorry, you've got your hand raised, sorry.
Oh, sorry. I didn't realise you were
No, I didn't, I didn't notice either.
Just chucking, waiting for
I actually I actually was making a proposal, but that's in abeyance at the moment, so.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
I would just, while we've got a moment, Madam Chair, and I still would like to raise my concerns in general about the speed at which these applications come through to us now. Because one of the things that we don't see is that other neighbours or other people with an interest perhaps haven't had time to see the applications arrive before we do. So we don't get a feel as to what people in the vicinity, I'm not talking about this particular case, but what people in the area feel about it. Which is often very, very useful. It's informative if it's not somewhere that we are personally au fait with.
I think we would have, we would have seen, if we'd have had two planning meetings as normal in January, we would have seen some of these in, you know, prior to that. But I take your point. We, we're kind of a little bit out of balance at the moment, coming into, to mid-February, which is why at least one of the items on tonight's agenda has already been completed and has gone to, to one of the Teambridge officers to determine. But
Chair, sorry, sorry to interrupt you. I just, just noticed that you are now the designated host.
Yeah.
Such if the clerk is trying to get back in, you would need to actually admit her back into the meeting. Oh, here she is.
She is obviously listening to you. I was going to, I was trying to text you, Yola, so I'm glad you, you found your way. Did you have your internet drop? You don't know? Okay. We will carry on anyway. We will carry on. Okay, we had a proposal from councillor Morehead to accept the item 2100192 with no objections. We haven't had a secondary as yet, but we have, we have busied ourselves with, with other items while we were waiting for you to try and patch yourself back in. Councillor Taylor, you've, you raised your hand. Please go ahead.
Happy to second the proposal.
Okay, thank you. So as set out, so we will take a vote on that and move on with that one. Are you, are you comfortable with that? Yolo, you're looking
Just to confirm, are we, are we still on Woodland Avenue? And
We certainly are.
For what happened there. I think I may have kicked the router. So I do apologise.
Thank you. Well, we're glad to have you back with us. We paused and you weren't too long to get back, so that's absolutely fine. Yes, it is the same item 2100192, Woodland Avenue, and we're just about to vote to accept it with no objection. Okay, members, can you show a hand if you're happy for that, for the proposal with no objection? Thank you. So that's everybody. Okay, we'll, we'll move on to the next item.
Could I just check, Madam Chair, is that what you call rebooting something?
Hmm. Oh, dear me.
Attack, I think.
Yeah. The good news is it was recorded and it's been shared on Facebook as well. So we've all shared in that. Thank you from that point of view. Okay, let's
On TV, aren't we, like the other ones?
Absolutely. So let's, let's quickly move on from that point of view.
So you have no router here, Yola Mitchell.
Oh, my word. Oh, councillor Laver, you have your hand raised. Please go ahead.
I've noticed that this is Langston Cliff and we have something further on that is to do with the Mount Pleasant.
That's right.
I don't know whether it is, we should say these things that we know. You know, we know the, the owners, we, we don't have, it isn't an interest, but it's, I'd like to declare the fact that I do know them.
At the Langston Cliff Hotel.
At the Langston Cliff, and that will be the same when it comes to the Mount Pleasant one as well.
Absolutely fine. Do you feel that you, you know them well enough to not be able to, to vote on the item or speak on the item? Or just you want to declare the interest? Okay, that's fine.
Can I just clarify with the declaring of interest? Because obviously No, it's are, are you just sort of mentioning it to councillors and then you'll be abstaining from the vote as opposed to formally declaring an interest? So it's recorded on our website, et cetera?
I don't suppose I'm formally requesting it, but I think it is good for councillors to express that they do know. I mean, we go into the pubs, we do know them. You know, even though it isn't a formal interest. That's all I'm saying.
So did you want me to write down that you were abstaining or actually declaring?
No, I'm not abstaining.
She's not gonna abstain, she's not gonna abstain, and she is going to vote, but she just wants to say she does know them. Okay. And that's for both the item for Langston Cliff and for the yeah, it's the Red Rock Holdings, isn't it, for the Mount Pleasant? Yeah, okay. Thank you for that, councillor Laver. So if we can move on to, it's a tree preservation order. So really what we want to know is which tree and where is it? So if you could share your, your screen, Yola, it would be very useful. Thank you. No, it's a felling one poplar. It looks quite close to the entrance. And I think the tape measure, if there is there, as hopefully members have had a look at the item on the website, this is a possibly dangerous tree that's shed branches. It's quite a tall and substantial tree. And the tree specialist has had a look at it and has recommended that it needs to be felled to ensure it doesn't actually fall on anyone walking along the drive or any cars going along the drive from that point of view. Okay. Councillor Morehead, you're first. If you would like to go ahead, please.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. The arboretural officer, Mark Waddens, is the case officer on this. And as we know, he's expert. And I'm very pleased to see that there is going to be a replacement tree planted. So I would be worried if we were losing a tree, but this is going to we're going to keep the status quo, although it'll take some years for the new one to get to the size, but
Yes, this is quite a large tree, isn't it? Yeah. Okay, thank you, councillor Morehead. Councillor Heath, please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Yes. Interestingly enough, in some countries, and I think it's the USA, populas are classed as weeds. And the reason being is that the roots can go miles under the ground and cause lots of problems. So I'm not surprised that they want this one down near buildings. I am very pleased, as it's been said, they're going to put another one. Does anybody know if they stated what type of tree? What, what is it? Who knows what it is?
Councillor Morehead's nodding her head, so
I believe they say an ash or a particular ash, anyway.
A particular type of ash, okay. Thank you for that.
Not the one that drops the keys into the, its keys into the drainage holes and you go
Yeah, if you drop the keys in, you can never open the door again. Anyway, yes, that's great, fine.
Okay, thank you, councillor Heath. Councillor Foden, you're next, please go ahead.
Thank you. I was going to echo what councillor Morehead has already said. I'm pleased that Mark Waddens has, has had a say on this. And also very pleased that they will be replanting, they will be planting another tree in its place. So I'm happy for it.
Okay. Am I right in, I'm, I might be losing the plot here. Councillor Morehead, did you, did you propose to, that we accept this item?
I'm quite happy that we raise no objection.
Okay, thank you for that. And we don't have any other members. We have councillor Wrigley with his camera off, which I'll ask what's, what's happening with that. Hopefully everything's all right from a technical point of view there. But I'm happy to second your proposal, councillor Morehead, that we raise no objection and subject to the approval of the, obviously if the tree officer, from that point of view, we always add that proviso. So we will take a vote on that, if that's okay. Thank you. I'm afraid we've got no say so on councillor Wrigley. Councillor Wrigley, can you hear us?
He's ordering a Paella.
I'm wondering if that's the case.
For after the meeting.
I'm wondering if that's the case. Um, okay. Well, we'll just take it that he's dropped out from, from that point of view. Yola, if that's okay, we'll make a note of that. It might be that he's going to be coming back. But we will move on from that point of view. And hopefully he will, if it is a technical issue, he will come back shortly. If we are to go on any further, I was conscious of the fact that this is quite a long agenda. I will call a comfort break at 8:30 if that's the case, if we're still here. Ah. Councillor Wrigley, we were worried that you've got a technical problem or something, but everything okay?
My apologies, Chair. I had a coughing fit, so I needed to go and get a glass of water, but I didn't wish to interrupt you.
Okay, thank you. I was just gonna say that we have got a long agenda tonight. So if necessary, I will call a, if we're still talking, and we probably will be, as it's 25 past eight, we'll have a, a comfort break as we're in the middle of items now. We could actually do that now and come back in about, what? Five minutes, five minutes, all right. We'll, we'll be back in about five minutes and, and carry on with the agenda from let's have a look at the time. Thirty-one minutes passed, if that's all right. So if you'd like to turn your cameras off, make sure you're muted. And we'll be back and, from that point of view, thank you.
You all right, Yola? You all right?
So I've just stopped the live stream because that would have been livestreamed, Mary. So you need to hide, turn off your camera. Okay. I can see that we're recording, Yola. And we've nearly got everybody back, so thank you. Councillor Wrigley, hopefully you're going to join us shortly.
We are live again.
Okay, thank you very much. Councillor Wrigley, can you turn your camera on, please? Hopefully you're back with us. This is the danger of having a little bit of a timeout. Someone's laid back to the, to the party. We'll give just a couple of seconds extra for him to join us. And then we'll move on with the, the next item. Otherwise, we're going to be here for an awful long time. We still have four items left to, to look at. Okay, we will start the next item then. Twenty-one, double O two two eight. This is full planning permission for replacement canopies and side screens. This is for the Seaside's Cafe Bar, Beach Bar and the Lounge and Sports Bar down on Piermont Place. Okay. I think they've posted a photo of the Willow's Cafe to show the kind of screens that they're talking about. The side screens that divide the different cafes there will be similar to the previous photograph. And it literally is a replacement canopy and the addition of side screens, which will only be used apparently when bad weather strikes. Which unfortunately, this time of year, it seems to be an awful lot of the time, from that point of view. Okay, thank you, Yola. If you can take us back to, to members. Thank you, Martin. We, councillor Wrigley, we're glad to see you back. Okay. So does any, any members have anything to say on this item? And hopefully you've had a look on the online of the, of this item for the replacement canopies and side screens for all of these cafes. As I mentioned, it's for Seaside's, the Cafe Bar. So all four of the, the businesses that are along that place. Councillor Heath, you had your hand raised first. Please go ahead.
Thank you. Is this the stretch where the casino is as well? Yeah, the same road, is it? Same, same stretch, same block of
Where Harrison's is, do you mean? Where Harrison's Amusements?
Yeah, that's the one.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's further down from there. But yes, it takes, it's, it's all of the cafes and, and bars that take you right down to, to the end. They're towards the train station.
The reason I'm saying, because I do remember about a year ago, it must be now, there was a asking for permission, which they didn't get, to extend out things, if you remember right, onto the pavement. So I assume that they're not coming out as far as that, because obviously that would be the same problem and we suddenly lose half the pavement. So they're not, they're not going further out. Am I right on that?
Yeah, that, this is, the one I think you're thinking of was at Harrison's Amusements. They were putting a permanent well, a kind of divider rather than a canopy. These are, these seem to be plastic screenings, not unlike the Willow's cafe that they showed on there. They have stated that it would only be, they will only be used when bad weather, for bad weather. So they're not going to be a permanent structure from that point of view.
Conservation area, isn't it? I'm right in saying. So I guess we, whatever we say, we should also subject the conservation areas officers' approval, yeah?
Okay, yep. Thank you. I think we're having problems with the internet tonight in Dawlish. People are coming and going. So sorry, sorry if you're, you're struggling with this. Okay, councillor Heath, did you have anything else to add or I'll move on to the next?
Really just the fact we might need to add, subject the conservation officers' approval, that's all.
Okay, thank you for that. Councillor Morehead, please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Similar comment, because in the past, especially when I believe Willow's applied to have awnings, it was quite controversial. It is in a conservation area. I would simply say, I would be guided. I would have no objection, subject to contribution from the conservation officer.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Councillor Laver, please go ahead.
I'm being picked to the post. That's exactly. And I get a bit biffed when they let it go through on the planning number. Because that planning number should be full stroke con, because it is a conservation area. So that's, that's mine. But I agree with what everybody said.
Okay, thank you for that, councillor Laver. Councillor Tate.
Thank you, Chair. Yes. I certainly, where there are fixed structures, they're, they're not very attractive, as we can see from the, from the photos of one of the, what was a neighbouring cafe. These, these are lightweight frames and as, as you say, the, and the design and access statement spells out exactly when they are going to be using these, the screens. I think, yes, where, where, where possible I think, yes, where possible, they shouldn't, they shouldn't be, they shouldn't be used. And perhaps, yeah, there should be a condition attached to to mirror what the applicant is asking for here. Because I think it would be all too easy to leave them permanently in position. And that wouldn't create the same sort of cafe culture, you know, airy feel about the frontages. I think very important that, you know, conservation area, in a conservation area like this, although there have been substantial changes along the years, that we try and preserve that, that sort of openness and and welcoming feeling that the current buildings do have.
Okay, thank you for your input. Councillor Foden, you raised your hand, please go ahead.
Thank you, I'm sorry, I think that was my habits to blame for me cutting out earlier.
Okay, that's an original one, okay.
I echo councillor Taylor's comments. I'm happy to support them for use when needed in bad weather, to stop your coffee blown away or to stop your pint of beer blown away. But I echo councillor Taylor and the previous councillors as well, that it is the conservation area, so discreet, but I do, I do support it for when it's needed in bad weather.
Okay, so from the point of view, you agree that a condition that was, as was mentioned by councillor Taylor, that it should be as a condition to the site? Okay, thank you. Okay, so we've, we seem to be in general agreement. Councillor Loutha, did you want to come back? I see you've got your hand raised. Please do.
Thank you. I'm just looking at the picture that's been put up. And it's down for Baileys. Now, is this in that area where it's Baileys that are actually coming out or not?
It's, it's it's, it's for all of the seasideers cafe bar beach, it's for all of those properties going along there from where Willow's, Willow's I believe has been taken over by the same company, so it's, it's all of them having individual dividers and canopies.
So it's the area, because what I'm looking to see is that the road then and footpath narrows, so it's not that area. It's, it's what I call this top area near Harrington, Harringtons. Yeah.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that was it.
I see what you mean, okay. Councillor Heath, you wanted to come back, please carry on.
Yeah, I do think it was a comment, actually, I know it's Dawlish and we're all a bit conservative here, but in some respects, seeing this.
Speak for yourself, councillor Heath, actually, speak for yourself.
Independent, so it was a small C, but anyway.
Okay, that's fine, thank you.
No, but you know, if it encourages more use in slightly inclement weather, which we have a lot down here, so they could be there. If we vote for this, bear in mind, they're probably up most of the winter. But, you know, it's good because we need to find ways of being able to enjoy the slightly not very good weather, but still have things going on, especially with Covid, you know, in the outside air, it would probably be a good idea, and I don't think this Covid is going to go away any day, so inoculations or not.
Okay, thank you for that. Councillor, councillor Moorhead, I think you've already mentioned something on this item, but I'll come back to you in a moment, I'm going to go to councillor Wrigley first and I'll come back to you. Councillor Wrigley, please go ahead.
Just for clarity, I've been looking at the descriptions and trying to work out exactly what it is that's here. I think whilst the side frames and the canopies are retractable, I think the framework is there permanently.
Okay.
That wasn't quite what I heard people say, I think, so it's, it's the new canopies, if I can just quote from the design and access statement, new canopies have a lightweight frame. And are the new canopies have a lightweight frame, the canopies are retractable, allowing them to be lowered in bad weather and raised again as soon as the weather improves. The screens, so they're saying, I'll go back a paragraph. The proposal is to remove the framed canopy and side screens from fifteen A.
Yep.
And the existing retractable canopies. And to replace them with new matching framed canopies and removable side screens. So the two concepts, I think, is one is a retractable canopy, which they currently have, that have no, no attached frames.
Yep, okay.
The other one, as the existing Willow's, is a framed setup where the canopy and side screens are removable.
Right, so the actual frames would still be in place, I see what you, I see the, yeah, we needed to know that, thank you.
I believe that to be what they're talking about.
Yeah, well, they cite the, with the cafe, Willow's Cafe, which doesn't exist now, because it's, I think it's been rebranded, but they're citing that the canopies and the side panels being the same as that, so those panels and frames are, yes, you're right, they're still in, they're still in place. Yeah, so that is slightly different from that point of view. Thank you for that clarification, councillor Wrigley. Councillor Moorhead, thank you for your patience, please go ahead.
Thank you for letting me have another bit of input. I go back to what I said originally. In that I would like to know that the conservation officer has some input into this, however, since it appears that Willow's as well now is incorporated into the same scheme, I think it will have an overall better appearance, because I'm hoping, although it's an assumption, that the colour schemes and so forth will, will all be one, so in, in general, subject, as I say, to the conservation officer's decision, it sounds to me, it might even be something of an improvement.
Okay. I don't think we've worked our way up to a proposal at this stage, but councillor Wrigley, you wanted to come back on something?
Yes, sorry, it was just having gone through the clarification and thinking about it, I think the the dilemma in my head is, is a set of frames that have useful then canopies that can be used, good or bad in that area, and the conclusion that I think I'm coming to is that if they are done tastefully and they are matching along the front and we have a wider ability to have more outdoor but coverable areas, albeit within frames, I think in the balance, that's probably a good thing. So I think I would vote for, I would like to propose no objection.
Based on, on what we've discussed this evening, we did mention, one, another member mentioned subject to conservation officers.
Absolutely, yes, fully agree with that.
Input to that. Okay, you're, you're happy to incorporate that as well. Okay, thank you. Thank you. Councillor Moorhead, you wanted to come back, as you mentioned the conservation officer, but carry on.
In that case, yes, I would be happy to second the proposal.
Thank you very much, councillor Moorhead. Okay, there's no other hands indicating that anyone else wants to speak. So we have a proposal and the second to accept the proposal before us with the proviso that the conservation officer is content on the, on the item. So can we take a vote, please? Yeah, that's unanimous, thank you. Thank you for your input on all these, the members and your patience, we are, we are getting to the end, nearly. Okay, we now come to item twenty one, oh oh, two three six. And this is the site of Shell Cove, nineteenth or nineteen Old Timothée Road, we seem to have seen this quite a few times, but this is all about a removal of condition. Removal of condition six on the current permission, which is, it does go back to twenty sixteen, sixteen oh oh, three hundred. So that's how long we've seen this one coming around and around. And councillor Heath is the closest person, if you'd like to go ahead.
Chair, yeah, as you said, this is, it seems to be every month this one comes up now and I remember councillor Wrigley saying, wouldn't it be good to think you get it? Hello?
Hello.
Did you hear that? I don't know what's going on here.
I heard some of that, sorry, carry on.
The sound's going on and off.
Carry on.
Yes, I, I don't know whether we've thought about this. I did read some of the letters and the reason why they want to take it off is because they could not get enough people under the old one, which I've now forgot the name, the original.
Condition.
Pegasus Life.
Yeah, that's the one, Pegasus. They said they couldn't sell it at the right price, or they probably meant they couldn't sell it at a high enough price, but that's something else. Fact is, that's not our problem really. And I don't, don't actually believe it, because you can sell these sort of, these type of things quite easily. So I'm a wee bit suspicious on that, but this is the thing I want to propose, or not propose, but ask for us to also open up on the debate. As I understand it, at the present moment, there is no affordable homes, because it was plus fifty, it was special development. I think I'm right in saying that. By taking this off, suddenly they have no affordable homes and they can sell the whole lot at full price. Is this a ruse or am I being a bit superstitious here or suspicious? And I've also heard on the grapevine that every single one of these, probably bar one, is already like under offer. I think, well, hang on a minute, how can it be under offer, or at least they've got tenders in, they may not have put a deposit down when they haven't even got the planning side approved. And I'm not saying, because I wouldn't want to say this publicly, I can smell a rat here, but am I missing a trick here or what is going on? So does anybody else know? I will, I will add one thing, because I may not say anything else, but whether that site there with a high quality development is the right place for affordable homes, I don't know, I'm not commenting on, so maybe nobody would have wanted to take it on with that position for that sort of price overlooking the sea. But nevertheless, it is what it is, and what do we all think about this? Have I got this completely wrong about affordable homes?
Okay, thank you, thank you councillor Heath, I'll bring in some other councillors and see if we can, I don't know, get some more clarity, I don't know. Councillor Taylor, can you give any clarity to this item, please?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, so under the Pegasus Life scheme, which I doubt is going ahead now, it may be, the two monolithic blocks which divided opinion, let me put it like that, will, could still go ahead, you know, there is well, it's an existing planning permission, it may have lapsed by now. It is, but more likely it'll, it'll come forward as a, as a different, a different scheme. So it's, it's not, Pegasus Life wanted it as a, as a retirement, effectively, a sort of a mini retirement village with affordable housing off-site. And from that point of view, I believe they entered into a section one oh six, would have entered into a section one oh six agreement in order to gain the planning permission. So, so that the necessary funds could be recovered to, to for Teambridge to collect monies to then get the affordable housing paid for off-site. I don't have any objection to this site being non-ages, if you like. Being open to people of all ages. If it, if it helps with the, if it helps to get the, get the, make the development successful, then, then so much the better from, from, from my point of view. So, so, so I would propose no objection to this amendment.
Okay. Thank you councillor Taylor. Councillor Moorhead, you wanted to make a comment on this development, please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, I also have concerns to some extent. The original application for the entire site was made by Pegasus Life. In fact, they kept sending me brochures all the time, but they were very expensive. The current application and the last one or two we've seen, I think, is to do with Poppy Developments, is that the name?
That's right, yes.
You've got that. So it, I, it puzzles me that they're still basing all their applications on the original planning application which was approved, which was for a different company and for a different site altogether, well, a different designed, differently designed site altogether. And that's what the restrictions apply to. I don't know how they're doing this mix and match, and rather like councillor Heath, since as I understand it, as I, as I perceive it, these are quite separate developments, then they are not being approached from the point of view of contributing affordable housing percentages, because it's not the same development, it's not the same owner. So I'm a bit concerned about that. And I really don't know why they're still using the original planning application and all the that went with that for a completely different company and different design and different development. I, I find it odd.
Okay, thank you councillor Moorhead. My take on it is that it began with the Pegasus Life development and then the subsequent taking over of the, of the site by Poppy Developments is that they took on that, that planning permission and then looked to make the changes to it, which is why we've seen subsequent planning applications for those, but I'll take, I take your point. Councillor Wrigley, you raised your hand to make a comment on this. Please go ahead.
Yes. It always puzzles me that you don't actually see the condition six actually laid out in the application that says, so I've gone back to the original planning application. Condition six, the dwellings hereby permitted shall be used solely for the purposes of persons aged fifty five or over or their partners who are aged over fifty and for no other purposes.
Yep.
It then goes on to say, reason to accord with the terms of the permission and in order to control the use the site and in the interests of highway safety. The implication is that planning permission for such a development as this would not have been given were not for a set of retirement flats. I resent developers coming back and trying to chip away at the conditions that are put on to applications at a future date and being trying to change the terms upon which they were granted the application in the first place, because they might have got their calculations wrong. They are very, very quick to use viability calculations that are set out at the very beginning to determine whether they can or not provide things like affordable housing and road developments and all these other things. But as soon as it turns out they have made a mistake with their calculations, we are expected to bend over and actually release them from their obligations. I would propose that we refuse this, that we object to this on the original basis, that the original reason for planning permission six still stands. And we do not see any reason why that should be lifted. Just, I also checked their section one oh six agreement and they provided over two hundred thousand pounds towards off-site affordable housing, so, so that one is fine. But I don't see any reason to change condition six, and so I would propose an objection.
We already have a proposal on the table, although it hasn't been seconded by councillor Taylor to propose no objections. So obviously that one is absolutely dynamically opposed from that point of view.
Which is why I didn't make it an amendment.
Thank you. Where do we go with this?
Whoever gets the second or first.
I guess that's the case. Councillor Heath, the power is in your hands.
Oh, that's interesting. Yeah, I assume the one oh six agreement is still in place, because all the amendments, has that been dropped? But if it is,
Yeah.
that is something. Now, there is one objection on the website from a neighbour saying that they fear if it's not over fifty, although it's a bit ageist to say that over fifty's don't drive much, but there could well be a lot more traffic in this road ageist to say that over 50s don't drive much, but there could well be a lot more traffic in this road if there's lots of young people flying in and out with flash cars. They are £700,000, so they probably will have flash cars. If we were to approve it, but it sounds as if it's not going that way, but if we were, I certainly would like us to add that we would not look favourably on any amendments adding extra homes in this estate should it come back again. I think that's something we could, we could flag up because we don't want more homes creeping in if it's going to be a busy, busy estate. The road there is not very good. It's, as you know, for those that don't know, it's a dead end road. And walkers tend to go down this road now and walk in the middle of the road as I do very often and surprise and feel quite aggrieved that a car should be coming down near me. Walking down, then you can get to the cliffs that way. So I'd like to say actually, just something else, that 20 mile an hour road, to be honest, with our, added to our thing, councillor Morehead, it's a 20 mile road because walkers use that road very regularly. And so am I right in saying this hasn't been seconded yet?
We have two proposals that have been stated councillor. We have councillor Taylor has proposed no objections and as set out, councillor Martin Wiggly has proposed that we reject this, this proposal.
Right, I'm going to back Martin Wiggly and I'm going to second it.
Okay, thank you. Seconded by, Yola, you have your, you have your hand raised and I always come to you first, so carry on.
It's just to say that it is now nine o'clock, so you will actually need to vote to continue the meeting for half an hour, but just be aware of the number of items you still have. So please carry on, but you do need to vote.
Okay, so we'll, we'll pause at that point. We now have a substantive motive, motion and a seconder. So we will just pause to take a vote that we are happy to continue for the next half an hour with the tonight's agenda, please. Thank you. Okay councillor Heath, I'll move on to the next councillor who would like to have some input on this and that will be councillor Loudon, please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I've been picked at the post again. Everything that councillor Wiggly said, I was kind of steaming here agreeing with him. Time and time again, for many years, developers have put in for nursing homes, things to do with the elderly, this kind of thing. I don't know what they, they called it some kind of, oh, later life. That's what it is.
Later life, that's right.
And time and time again, they pull out on providing this, the accommodation. So that is the reason why I wanted to second councillor Wiggly, but I got picked at the post.
Okay, but the spirit was there councillor.
And I hadn't spoken before.
You hadn't, but the, I beg your pardon councillor Loudon, point taken, but the spirit was willing and we know where your support is, so thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay councillor Taylor, please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, it's this concept of, you know, retirement village. It, it was, the restriction was for over 55 or partners over 50. I, I don't think, it wasn't like there was going to be a warden on site or anything like that. It wasn't, it, it wasn't assisted living of any sort, it was just, it's only for, 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 for those who, who've retired and, and and have done quite well for themselves as well, judging by the, the prices of some of the units that were, that were banded about at the time. So, so as an exclusive estate, now that, that, this, this application is, is removing that exclusivity, if you like. And from that point of view, I actually applaud the, the fact that it's now going to be available to those people of, of a younger age, who, and I don't really understand the, the highways argument, because let's face it, you know, if, 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 if these buyers are younger, well, they'll be able to walk down to Dawlish, won't they? Getting in their cars. So, so from that point of view, I, I still hold with my, my original proposal. If it doesn't get seconded, it doesn't get seconded. But then we've got councillor Wiggly's motion, substantive motion to, 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 to vote upon first.
We, we do indeed councillor Taylor and point, point noted, but I'm afraid we're, we're looking in another direction at the moment. We will see if we come back to you. Thank you. Councillor Morehead, please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm very much swayed by the argument made by councillor Wiggly. These current developers are piggybacking, if you like, on the original development. And that was a stipulation of it and there are reasons given for it. And it wasn't simply because it was to make it a nice place for old fogies. And we're not, they are old fogies at that age. I, I would be very concerned if younger people who are definitely in employment were really living there. The simple fact that there is little, if any, employment in Dawlish. So if people of a, of working age, I know a lot of over 50s would be, were living there, they're either going to be going out towards Newton Abbot and Plymouth, or they're going to be going through Dawlish or up the back roads to get to Exeter. We, we just don't need any more congestion on the roads. And on top of that, the exit from Shell Cove itself is fine. But then it immediately exits onto the A379, almost exactly opposite John Nash Drive on the top of a hill where you've got a lot of traffic coming from either direction at commuting times. So I, I can see why those first what's the word I'm looking for? The, the first oh, come on, help me out here. Why the first clauses were put in there.
The conditions, yeah, the conditions.
To restrict the housing to people of 55 or 50, depending on the partner. I really, I agree wholeheartedly with councillor Wiggly on this one.
Okay. Thank you councillor Morehead. And back to you councillor Wiggly for some closing points, I think, from that point of view.
Closing points, yeah, don't mention anything more. I was just gonna say, I, I, I do sympathise with the position that councillor Taylor says, that this, this does make it more inclusive. But my, my principle is the same, that, you know, the grounds upon which it was granted in the first place. Yes, I probably wouldn't have voted for those grounds in the first place, but that's how it was grant, that's how it was granted. And they shouldn't be wriggling out of them now.
Okay, thank you for that. We have a proposal and a seconder that we refuse the removal of this condition, condition six on the planning permission before us. So we have had a proposal and a seconder, so if we can take a vote on that, please, to reject the proposal before us. Thank you. Okay, so that's does, is anybody going to, have you counted Yola? Is anybody going to vote against that? And is anybody going to abstain? So we have two against one abstention. Thank you. Okay, so that's carried. Right. We will move on now to 21 00232. This is a major development, Red Rock Holidays Mount Pleasant Road, Dawlish Warren. Use of 18 holiday apartments and their existing holiday apartments to be used as permanent residential dwellings.
Chair, if I may, I think I, I hadn't looked at this one properly. I hadn't realised that it was.
Wondered if you were going to councillor Wiggly.
Pleasant Inn, and I think I probably should stand out on this one.
Okay, you'd like to switch your camera off and we'll bring you back shortly. Yeah, thank you. Okay, so these are apartments that are tucked under the, the cliff, tucked under the Mount Pleasant Inn in fact. Two floors. And I know these look like proposed, these are actually already in place. And are currently used for holiday accommodation. I think what's slightly different is that there is actually a parking bay that is used intermittently, that's a little bit further along, and it looks like that has parking spaces marked out for it. Okay, thank you Yola. Councillor Morehead, you have your hand raised, please go ahead.
Sorry, I, I do do my homework, so I'm always eager to.
Yeah, no, no, that's absolutely fine. I've read, I've read them as well, so you carry on.
It, it's, it's a difficult situation. Not those many years ago, Dawlish Warren was designated a holiday and tourism area and there was no residential development taking place. However, that's gradually changed as Dawlish has come under pressure and expanded. But I have concerns because these were built as holiday accommodation.
Yep.
And I would not be confident without some real specifications from a professional that they are of sufficient standard to be used for residential purposes. So that would be my first concern, that they may not be of a sufficiently high standard, including insulation and heating. And my, and I'm also concerned that it is just adding to the change of character of the area of Dawlish Warren.
Okay, thank you councillor Morehead. I have no other councillors wanting to give any opinions on this. So I think I will mention, I, I think this is a really interesting item before us members. And although it's an existing development, I note that this is being a provision for rentable properties within Dawlish Warren. After the owner of the properties has looked into the fact that there is a desperate need for affordable rented small one and two bedroom flats. The designation is that four of them will be affordable with a social level of rent which will go under the local authority. I think it's an exciting proposal and may make a big difference for a lot of families who perhaps are looking to rent in the area. I take councillor Morehead's point that Dawlish Warren is very often, it is a holiday resort. Is it right for this, these properties, these 18 apartments to be actual permanent? And that is the, the reason we're here today to, to look at that and think about that. My mind is that the offset of the benefits for, for this and people who are struggling and do want affordable homes does turn that corner for me. I must admit, I think this is a very exciting proposition from that point of view. I see, I can see another couple of hands while I've been babbling away. Thank you for indulgence, members. Councillor Foden, please go ahead.
Thank you Chair, thank you. And I echo your comments. I think this is a really exciting plan. I've read through the documents. I remember when these smart apartments were built, replacing what was previously there. They are much smarter, but I think the, the plan and from reading the documents that they will be rented through Teambridge District Council and that they have consulted with Devon County Council and if there's families there, then there'd be the, the, be the the money put aside for the education for Dawlish Primary School, if that was the case. But I think this is really exciting because it could provide the, it could provide for the needs of local working young people, working families, particularly for the local hotels down in Dawlish Warren and for all of our other exciting up and coming businesses like Paella Delivered that we've already talked about tonight. And I, I'd be very happy to propose this. That we accept this and approve this. And I think it's really exciting. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillor Heath, please go ahead.
Thank you Chair. Looks as if everyone's, well, not everyone, certainly possibly the majority are going for this. If we were to do this, picking up on a comment earlier, could we add into that subject to the original design and building regulations were adequate for a full-time residence, which means of course that they would be living here in the winter and we do need the maximum insulation. Because sometimes some apartments, you're right, aren't always insulated the same. But, you know, we don't know what the building regulation applied to when they got these. I don't know how long ago they built them, it wasn't that long, was it? But I think we should add that to it, subject to it being up to standard for full-time accommodation with insulation and modern building practices, just in case it's not been built and it's pretty poor, because that can happen, you know, like a caravan.
I think that's, I mean, obviously that would be up to councillor Foden if she would accept that proviso. But from the point of view of a social letting, they, that would be, that would be subject to stringent verification and examination anyway. They would need to come up to standards. And I guess also because both Teambridge and Dawlish have declared climate emergencies, it would also need to have efficient heating. Therefore the insulation would need to be looked at too. So I think that would be covered, but I appreciate your point councillor Heath.
I'd like it to go on it though, if, if others agree. Purely simply, it shows that we're doing our job, we are, we are thinking about it. Even if it is automatic, we've actually flagged it, that's really what I'm saying.
Absolutely. Councillor Foden, are you happy to, to accept that as part of your proposal as, that you've already mentioned?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I, I appreciate that proposal hasn't been seconded as yet, but I just want to make sure you're happy with that. Councillor Tamlin, please go ahead.
Can I just clarify? Are they to be rented or can they be bought as well?
All to be rented. For a social rent level. So in other words, count the equivalent, I guess, of council houses and managed through Teambridge Social Housing. The others would be at the, the market value and managed through a letting agency. In this case, I believe it's Devon, Devon Rose.
Yeah, I mean, I wouldn't want them to be second homes, this was the thing, what I was thinking.
That's right, that, 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 there's a, there's a covenant document that, that they would be for rental and not to be, not to be bought, I believe. I, I can be corrected from that point of view, but that could be perhaps added as well from what has been said with the, another proviso from that point of view, to put reassurance in there.
Yeah.
Okay, yes, thank you. Thank you councillor Tamlin. Councillor Taylor, please go ahead.
Yes, thank, thank you Chair. Yeah, having had a look at the section 106 document, yeah, it does, it does clearly state about the, the for affordable homes, right, for rent. There, there isn't anything in, in there though that says that the that to guarantee that the homes won't be sold at a later date, even though the intention now is to, to rent them on the open market. That's the other, the other 14 homes. So, so I'm pleased that you've, you've, you've indicated there is another, another document that, that would make them available for, for rent on a permanent basis, albeit it's a, a market rent. Because I think there is, there is a, a demand for, for that type of, that type of accommodation in, 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 in the district and locally too. So from, so from that point of view, I would have, I would have no objection.
That's my understanding of it. I think we can most certainly, if, if councillor Foden is happy to include that that proviso as well, and from my, my understanding of it, we can also include that into it, if you're happy to do so councillor Foden. Just to kind of keep it absolutely clarified from, on that base, that we are accepting that on that basis.
Yeah, of course.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I don't have any other members wanting to speak. So we have a proposal before us. I'm happy to, to second the proposal, as I expect you thought I would. From, from the point of view of, I've, I've already set my hand out, as it were. So if members, no other members have anything else to say, we will go to the vote that we're accepting that. Councillor Morehead, please go ahead.
I was just hoping that we could ask the officer here to read out the final proposal.
That's no problem. Thank you, Yola.
I knew that was coming. Perhaps a succinct summary.
Perhaps a succinct summary to go with the proposal. But so I've, I've put the notes about subject to the structures being up to standard for residential. All year accommodation with insulation and all the sufficient regs, plus that they remain as rental. But if you have a succinct way of saying that, I'm very happy to write that down.
I think that's just as succinct as it can be. I'm getting my, I'm getting my tongue twisted anyway.
If that covers the points, obviously I can put that in.
Yes, it does.
In better sentences when it comes to the minutes, but as long as that's the, what you wanted to get across, that's fine.
Yeah, I believe, I believe so. Okay. Right, we'll take a vote on that basis. Thank you. To accept that proposal. Thank you. Thank you, members. Councillor Wrigley, if you can hear me, please come on back.
Thank you. There were two, it was just a bit too close to too many aspects for me to take part, but thank you very much.
Right, and by my reckoning, we are nearly, ladies and gentlemen, at the last item. And we have twelve minutes to go, so we might just make it. Ah, and we're back at Lower Rixdale Farm Barn. Twenty one double O two nine six. This is the conversion of a barn to a dwelling. With associated new courtyard and outbuildings, demolition of existing cattle shed and dairy. Scheme for amendment of windows, dining room to rear extension to form two separate windows and change of stable gables. From stonework to soft wood cladding, remove a carport garage beam, support post, et cetera, et cetera. Okay, so this is a different property. You can see the long house that's on that plan there in front of us. Is the one we were talking about at the start of the evening. This is the property to the, to the side, I think, yes. Thank you. Thank you for your point, Yola. And it's. Yeah, do we know what we're looking at? Who can tell? Okay. I've got this as listed building consent, is that correct, Yola? Thank you, yes. So again, I think the first thing to think, and I think, I'm not going to say it, I'm going to let councillor Morehead say, because I think I know what she's going to say. Go ahead, councillor Morehead.
If I might ask our officer, I believe again, this is a rather recent application and there is not as yet. Any kind of recommendation or from the conservation officer. And since it's a listed building, not necessarily the barn, but anything within the curtilage of a listed building comes under the same restrictions or restraints. I would, whatever is said, I would like to have it subject to. The consideration and advice of a conservation officer. Personally, I can see that this is meant to be a relatively modern thing again. I've got no problem with that. I'm very disappointed though, that they seem to be saying, well, we'll chop this out and we'll chop that out and we'll take down the stone wall here and. Take down the stables, which I think is a little sad because with a bit of imagination, some of the original. Parts of a building can be incorporated into even something quite modern, but. As I say, I would have no objections, subject to the advice of the conservation officer. Because it is important. It's all part of this one nice complex.
Okay, are you happy to make that as a proposal or would you rather wait and listen to what other people have to say first?
Yes.
Absolutely fine. Okay, that's fine. Martin Heath, councillor Martin Heath, please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. He's only adding a little bit to it, that if we were mine to. Give it an okay, that we also do ask for. Bird boxes and alike, because there doesn't seem to be any particular thing being asked. I haven't read all the stuff that may be perhaps in the environmental one, but as been pointed out, half the stuff's missing at the moment, so we can't really comment on it. So because it's not there, we've got to say, only subject to not just the officer, but also. The more provision for wildlife with bird boxes, unless, et cetera. Because again, it wasn't a barn, so it's going to have a lot of sort of wildlife flying around and running on the ground. I don't know what we do about the running on the ground ones, but basically, yeah, I think, I think we need to see more. If it's not there, then we should ask for it. It's a condition, whether it's, except, not it's something else.
Okay, thank you, councillor Heath. Councillor Wrigley, please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. It's kind of interesting. I was looking for the location of this on, on the, on the maps, on Google Maps. When you look at the straightforward maps, it seems it is not a difficult thing to look at. Then you look at the satellite picture. And you realise that the, much of the barns have already been demolished and it's actually already a fairly large construction site. Then when you look at the street view site, you see that the barns that were there were pretty. Poor condition, covered in sort of rambling ivy and all the rest of it and tin roofed. If not, if not other than tin, corrugated roofed constructs. And they, they look like very unremarkable. Typical sort of farm outbuildings. So I think what they're proposing to do to it whilst removing it as a farm turns it into quite a. Nice and attractive and useful building. So subject to all of the sort of constraints that councillor Heath was. Describing about biodiversity and being wildlife friendly. I think it's a vast improvement to what was there. So subject to those. What's it, I don't think we've had a proposal yet. I'd propose no objection.
We also had the mention of the consideration of a conservation officer as well.
Indeed.
Would you be?
I'd happily absorb that into the.
Okay, thank you, councillor Wrigley. Councillor Lawber, please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I second councillor Wrigley's proposal.
Okay, thank you. Did you have anything else you wanted to say at this point?
No, I've just been listening and I think everybody has said was to be said.
Excellent, thank you. Councillor Taylor, you wanted to come in, please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, councillor Lawber, beat me, beat me to it. Seconded the proposal. I don't think we actually need the permission of the officer. For all these listed buildings or conservation area applications.
Can I, can I interrupt you? It wasn't about permission, it was about the consideration and judgment of the. So it wasn't the permission, it was at least that, because there's no report there, but I take your point, carry on.
And as you might, as you might expect, because, because we are often the first statutory consultee. To, to look over these plans, the conservation officer or listed buildings officer is often looking to us for a bit of a steer. As to, you know, which, which way things might go. So from, so from that point of view, I don't think we really need to condition all of our. Approval, approvals or refusals on that basis. But, but, you know, fully, fully prepared to support the, the. The proposal with, with the addendums as well.
Okay, thank you, councillor Taylor. Councillor Morehead, did you want to sum up? And we will, we will carry on from there. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, actually, following from something that councillor Taylor said in relation to another application. I think we do, we do need, we don't necessarily get everything as early as we've been getting lately. And usually we have got other reports that we can refer to. If we're not sure about something or we want to understand something better. So I think we're perfectly in order here to say that I would propose that. We have no objections, subject to contributions from the conservation officer and biodiversity officer.
Okay, and I think from that point of view, councillor Wrigley, if you're in agreement, I think you've already nodded your head from that point of view. We have a proposer and we have a seconders, so we will go ahead and vote, ladies and gentlemen. We might just be in under the wire if we do this. So let's see what happens. Okay, yeah, that's unanimous. Thank you. That's our last item this evening. Or have we got some more? Ah, actually, I've just remembered, there is another item.
You, you may wish to continue just for this item, if you're willing. Obviously, you have the option of deferring it, but you may. Depending on what you're minded to do.
We've had a, we've had a comfort break, so I'm, I'm, I'm minded to say, let's, let's carry on for a little bit longer. Let's hope it's not going to be more than, than half an hour, but I see a member's already put a hand up. Councillor Heath, did you have a quick, quick input on this one? You're muted, councillor Heath, sorry. We can't hear you.
Sorry, I was, I was on the last one. I just wanted to hear the full statement of our, of our proposal. It wasn't read out. I wanted to make sure that we not only said about what we said, but, you know, the provision of things like bird boxes and so on. Maybe that might not be on the list anyway, so that's it.
Okay, thank you, sorry, but. Okay, so we have committee terms of reference to look at, I believe, Yola. But you need us to vote to, to take the meeting on for at least another half an hour.
I don't know whether it's as long as half an hour. It's been a very, very long time since the meeting has gone past half past nine. I know it's usually nine o'clock to vote until half past nine. I think anything after that is probably.
Yeah.
It's not usual, but it's, yeah, I think it's possibly fifteen minutes.
I think we should defer. My personal feeling is that we should defer this as we've had a very long agenda, but I'll see if any of the members. Councillor Wrigley, you have your hand up, please go ahead.
Yeah, Chair, I think the terms of reference for this committee are fairly straightforward. I think they are fine. I would propose that we accept as set out.
Okay, I will see if there are any other members that had anything to say on this. No.
For information, they were, they were taken to committee, I think in May twenty eighteen, and there were no changes then either. So I don't think it's one that does change very much or has a lot of changes or those things, so it's entirely up to you, obviously.
No, that's fine, as long as members have read and are comfortable. Councillor Lawber, please, please go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Madam.
Chair.
Yes. It is getting late.
It is.
I don't seem to have got a copy of this. I printed out all the stuff that came, so. I will just not be able to vote because.
Should be just after, should be just after the minutes in your pack of papers.
Yeah.
Well, I printed it out, but it doesn't matter, I'll just not vote.
Page, page thirteen and fourteen.
Thirteen and fourteen, yes.
Yeah, no, it's only taking time up. You know, I don't really think.
Okay.
My vote will really, you know, float.
Well, you're entitled to your, your, your say so there, councillor Laber, so I.
You're one minute after half past nine now, so you may want to vote just to, if it sounded like you want to take it, I would vote just to.
Yeah, that's fine. I think we're, I think we're close enough to say, let's, let's, let's take it and carry on if members are minded. Well, let's see what the vote comes up with. I'm, I'm minded to propose that we, we carry on until we have finished this item. So can I see a show of hands for those who are happy for us to carry on until we finish this item? Thank you. Hopefully it won't be half an hour, but I know what you're saying. Okay, I have some other members that would like to contribute. Councillor Heath, please go ahead.
Yeah, I'm thinking about what's been said about not having the paper. I didn't really read it properly either, so I might abstain. But could anybody just actually, a few of the salient points? And I think most of these things, nothing really has changed. So just, we'd be happy to say yes or no on it.
Can we put it up on the screen?
Is that possible, Yola?
I probably wouldn't risk, I hadn't had it earlier because obviously it's gone out to everybody, so it's not a PowerPoint. So I think if I tried to do that now, A, it would take a long time.
And it would break everything.
Lose you again.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I mean, a precis would be the constitution is that the committee should be eight members. And the ex officio members. I'm really just reading the first lines of each item here, so I'll just quickly go through. All members of the, have the authority, may attend all meetings of the council and speak there with the permission of the committee chairman. The planning, the purpose of the committee is a statutory consultee of the planning authority. On behalf of the town council, we make formal representation on local plans, supplementary planning documents, neighbourhood plans. It's, it's really our bread and butter, all of this, so I think it's. You would recognise all of this if you, if you'd had a chance to have a look at it, I guess, from that point of view.
That's fine, we can go ahead, I reckon, don't you?
Thank you, councillor, councillor Heath. I'll, I'll take another member's opinion. Councillor Foden, please go ahead.
I'm happy to support what councillor Wrigley said. I've, I've seen these terms of reference many times over the years. And yes, I'm very happy with them. I'm happy to second councillor Wrigley's proposal. I think it was that we accept them.
It was indeed. There is no change to these. I would just, if, if members are. Yes, if you're, if you, if you don't feel comfortable to vote. Then, and you haven't had a chance to have a look at them, then I understand it, then maybe that you're, you're not going to, to vote on these. But, you know, that's an absolute fair point. Does any other members have anything else to say? We have a proposal to councillor Morehead, please go ahead. Oh, sorry, councillor Morehead, please go ahead.
I was just going to say that if any of us have been to other meetings and we've seen the, the usual. Terms of reference, this is all the basic stuff. How many people comprise the committee, who can vote? Who can't? The only difference on each committee is what your actual job is, and that's exactly what. Councillor Linda, sorry, the Chair quoted.
Much quicker.
The Chair quoted much quicker to it, so I don't think it's, it's complicated. From my point of view, I'm perfectly happy.
Okay, thank you, councillor Morehead. We have a proposal, I'm happy to, councillor Morehead. Did you have something to quickly add? Carry on.
No, I was trying to take it down, sorry.
Okay, councillor, councillor Alba, please go ahead.
Just to let you know that I have found it and I have read it.
Okay, okay. Do you feel, do you feel more comfortable about it now you've had a look at it? We're not, there's no wall.
I know terms of references.
No, that's fine.
Somebody else mentioned, seen many of them for years.
Absolutely, and there's no wall being pulled over anybody's eyes from that point of view. That's good. I'm glad that you're comfortable. Okay. Well, we have a proposal. I'm happy to second that proposal. We accept the terms of references as is. I'm not seeing any other hands that anyone else wants to speak at this point, so we will go to a vote if that's okay, please. Thank you very much, members. And we overrun by all of six minutes, so that's not too bad. I thought it was going to be ten o'clock, I really did, when I looked at the agenda, if I'm honest. Okay, time for a cup of tea for everyone. Thank you very much for your time and your patience this evening. We've gone through quite a lot of work, so well done and thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Yola. All the best. Thanks, everyone.
Thanks very much, bye.